Special call meeting of the mayor and city council, April 8th, 2019 to order. If you'll please stand, I'll do the pledge and remain standing, Mr. Jim Trippett, do the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and, Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed on this community, Lord, our prosperity. We give you all thanks, glory and honor for it, Lord. We ask you to continue to bless our community and, Lord, as we go forward, we ask you that your provision would continue to be upon us. Father, we ask you to bless this council meeting, we ask you to bless this mayor and city council tonight as they conduct the business of the city. God grant them wisdom. We pray that everything that is said and done will be acceptable and pleasing in your sight. Father, we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Gets us into the item number four, citizens' comments. Anybody has anything they'd like to bring in front of the council? Now be the time, please come to the front, state your name, address, and try to limit to three minutes, please.
My name is Scott Eldred, 245 Mount Pleasant Road, Carrollton, Georgia. I'm the president of the Carroll County Historical and I would like to ask you all and the councilmen if they would consider the little cabin over at the lake. I know the library's going to be using it for a while, but when they are through with it, we are looking for a place to open a little museum. Our facility, the Perry House, doesn't have good parking and not a handicap ramp. And we really don't have room to display things in that little Perry House. So, we're looking for a place to have a museum here so that we can display some of the things we have for the county. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Hager and I'm here to talk about the farmer's market. And I know that's later on the agenda, but I wasn't sure how it would come up for a public comment. So, I'd like now to hand... Cotton Mill Farmer's Market has been in operation since 2002 and we started on Bradley Street, across from City Hall. And we really appreciate the support we received from the city at that time. And we moved, it was gravel at that time and we had to move for when it was paved and it got too hot. And we moved another time, now we're down on Dixie Street. And we are looking for a more permanent home. And over the last few years, we have met with city staff to talk about parks that you have that might work. And we kept running into a stumbling block that the park spaces have a lot of other demands on them Saturday mornings. And city staff did not think it would be appropriate to try to block out a park for that time every Saturday morning. Because we are a year-round market. So, it was very heartening when council member Wojcik brought forward the idea of using a parking lot, a city-owned parking lot as a potential place to host the farmer's market. So, we thought that we would provide you with some ideas that would help with guiding a discussion on how something like that might work. Parking lots can work with or without pavilions, but they need shade. In the south, it gets hot in summer. You may have noticed that over time. But other cities have found ways to work this and they've figured out that farmer's markets are important amenities for the communities. And this goes from New York City to Statesboro to Blairsville. And they have put public resources into making farmer's markets work for their communities. And so, we want to be engaged in that discussion with you and we look forward to participating over time in that. And so, provided some pictures of how these things can work and I hope that this is useful to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brian. I just want to make one comment. We will be moving the agenda item of the farmer's market pavilion, removing it from this agenda. I'll make a motion to be able to have a discussion in a more work session friendly. So, we can have an open discussion, get your points on paper, actually get it into a plan, make it a more formalized process. But I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Philip Block and I'm a resident of Carrollton. And this is my daughter Mariette. She's a fifth grader at Carrollton Middleton School. We'd like to just briefly seek an opportunity for a future opportunity to talk about the question of water fluoridation here in Carrollton. We do have about a 20-minute presentation that we could provide that would provide very non-inflammatory, very fact and science-based information about fluoridation versus non-fluoridation. And we're very excited about the possibility and we get a sense that there are a number of people in our community that would also like to consider that as a possibility.
I can tell you, water treatment's my background and we do not like adding fluorine to the water. It's just one more chemical that we don't think is needed. But it has the support of the dental community and so I would suggest you get their support. And then I think you would have the public support. This is not a decision this body can make. It takes a referendum. That's required by the state. And so, again, this is something that, at a staff level, this is really not something we like doing. Adding fluorine is an expense. It's one more thing Connie's got to deal with at the plant. When you look at the history of where fluoride came from in the water, it's not very pretty. So, you've got some support at a staff level, but again, the dental community has very strong feelings about it. And I don't know what they know about teeth, so I respect their position. So, that's the real hurdle to get past on that issue.
Okay. So, if we were able to get, let's say, one or two dentists to join us, could we present maybe 20-minute set of like 10 items, 10 facts?
Why don't you meet with me if you wouldn't mind? Let's figure out the best way to present that. That's a lot of time for this body. And again, you know, at a staff level, at a technical level, we support what you're saying. But again, we also support our dental community, respect them. And again, they know a lot more about teeth than I do. So, if you would maybe call the switchboard and make an appointment with me, I'd be glad to sit with you and talk about it further.
Sounds really good. Thanks. Thank you.
Hi, councils in the city. I am April Rogers. I live in Bowden, Georgia. I used to deliver for Pizza Hut and I quit that because of health reasons. But I delivered for 14 months and I truly enjoyed it. However, after the recent thing that happened, I think in Gwinnett, where the guy went, maybe Douglasville, went up to the wrong apartment and ended up getting shot. I can't... It didn't happen too many times, but it happened enough to where I was concerned for my safety because the house or the apartment was not labeled correctly or labeled at all. And I'm basically going on a wing and a prayer that I'm at the right house to deliver pizza. And if you live in a house and you know where you live, you don't have to worry about going to the right house. But for me and any other delivery person, we don't live there. So, we don't know if that's 14 or 12 or 10 or whatever. And the trailer park communities here in Carrollton suck. There are maybe one or two that is nice enough to where they are labeled correctly and clearly to know that you're at the right trailer. And my safety was a concern of mine. So, I'm willing to help in any way to make it clear to know what house, what trailer is marked so people feel safe delivering in Carrollton. Thank you.
Any one else? Moving along, minutes. Anybody want to make a motion? We accept.
I move that we accept the minutes. Second?
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mayor and council announcements?
I don't have any comments.
Brian, you got anything else to say? I'm good, Tim.
Just briefly, the work session scheduled for the 18th at 5:30, that's next Thursday at 5:30 on the third floor. And then, for anyone interested, we're still trying to work through the NSP bids. We've tried to negotiate with the state on what we could do with those homes if we were to build them with federal money at the prices that were quoted in the bids. They have required some additional advertising and again, we're working through that process. What we've got is essentially one presidential administration changing rules on a program that was started by a previous presidential administration. So, for anyone interested in the details of that, I'd be glad to provide.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond real quick?
Mm-hmm.
I just want city staff to know I'm in a jury trial next week, beginning the 16th, in Hurd County for an entire week. The likelihood of me attending that work session is probably not going to happen. So, if I don't appear, it's not a disrespect for y'all or anything. It's just due to my jury trial. Appreciate it. I've only been litigating it for two years, so.
All right. Need approval for agenda items for consideration?
I'd like to actually add an item. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a police vehicle lease purchase in place of item number five, farmer's market pavilion.
Second? We also at this time going to take out farmer's market.
That's correct, yes, substituting those items.
Substitute. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one, Miss Stuttered, annexation and rezoning request.
The first item on your agenda is an annexation and rezoning request at 385 Beulah Church Road. The planning commissioner reviewed this request in March and recommended denial of the request, three to two. And the request is to annex it from county multifamily residential to city of Carrollton RM with the senior housing floating zone application to it. This request was made in an effort to construct 72 senior cottages for persons with ages 62 and over, plus an assisted living facility, plus a memory care facility. I'm available if you have any questions and I believe the petitioner is here too.
Anybody got any questions, Mr. Lee or Mr. Fowler? Don't present anything?
We sort of learned our lesson with respect to this application in two hearings before the planning and zoning board. And Mr. Legere would like to withdraw the request, go back to the drawing board to see if he can find something that will work. It's in an industrial area, he understands. Standing alone, it probably is not a suitable use for industrial. He's got a lot of money invested in this property. What he wants to do is to go back to the drawing board. He asked for permission just to withdraw. We had two thoroughgoing hearings before planning and zoning staff. They were opposed to this residential use. We want to try to figure out something to do with it. So, we asked permission to withdraw it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. You good with that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation. And again, I'd need to know from our counselor if this is something that the city can do. But this property's come up from time to time over the 15 years that I've been with the city. It is basically an island. It is not exactly an island. There's a sliver of property that ties it to the county, but it is basically an island surrounded by property that gets city service. And I recommend that while you have this opportunity, that you annex it into the city. That way, the city has control over it. And I recommend that you zone it M1, which is manufacturing.
Before it just gets blanket rolled in on that basis, we would like to get with some engineers to see what we can possibly do if it, for example, can be made part of an assemblage. I agree with Tim. It is standing alone, something that raises some consideration. But my client has asked me, ask you for permission to go back to the drawing board, not to annex it, without him having some input as to what he might be able to do with respect to that. Thank you.
Chuck, you want to weigh in on?
Well, it's up to you guys in terms of what you want to do. I mean, you're free to go ahead and move forward with the annexation tonight and the rezoning. You can do one without the other or you can allow the applicant to withdraw the application. So, it's just the wishes of the mayor and council.
What do you gentlemen want to do? I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one. I'm sorry.
I move that the city annex 19.48 acres located 385 Beulah Church Road and be zoned as M1, manufacturing.
Second?
Miss Stuttered, annexation rezoning request, .07 acres at 150 Fraser Road.
The second annexation and rezoning request is actually a staff-initiated request. This is a piece of property that the city acquired in a property trade back in 2014 with Baldassari that's just to the east of this property. At the time, the city traded this acreage, this .87 acres, for .87 acres that he owned so that he could do an expansion to his manufacturing facility. It was one of those pieces of property that never got annexed in after we acquired it. At this time, we would like to annex it in and zone it C2, which is what the remainder and the balance of the property to the west is. The planning commissioner reviewed this request after a March meeting and they recommended unanimous approval of it. I'm available if you have any questions.
If you don't mind me commenting, just to be clear, again, the manufacturer is in the county. He needed more property to expand his building. The previous administration agreed to trade property with him. That left the city with property that is in the county and it left him with the portion that he obtained from the city in the city. And we're trying to clean up these islands and these areas where the city limit boundary doesn't make sense. And so, this is just one of those cases. It's city property. It should be in the city limits since it's contiguous.
Any more discussion? Any questions? Make a motion, we annex and rezone request? Oh, anybody here to speak against it? Excuse me. Hearing none. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number three, recognition, 2018 Georgia Association of Water Professionals Platinum Award. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am delighted to present this. I'm going to ask Tony Richardson to come up and bring some of his people up and give even more detail. But I want to say that both the water plant and the wastewater plant have both won the platinum award for excellent operation this year. It takes five years in a row without any sort of bobble or mistake or failed lab test or even a burned-out light bulb on the control panel can cost you this award. And you may think, well, water treatment should be perfect, but there are literally thousands of tests that are run in a year's time. There are thousands of opportunities to lose this award. So, it takes people who are truly, truly on their toes. Most of this staff I've known for years and years, for decades. Danny Dyer and I have known each other since 1989. Connie Nelms and I are dealt with one another. I was on a board in another county and she was a plant superintendent down there years ago. So, the water treatment and wastewater treatment world is a small world and we all know one another. And I have the utmost respect for these people. So, I'm very proud for tonight and Tony, if you'd come forward and give more detail. And again, I want to thank Tony for what he does because he manages all of these people and does it very well.
Thank you, Mr. Grizzard. I would like to add that this award is a direct reflection of the diligence of our operators and our employees in both facilities. But they couldn't do it without the support of mayor and council and the other departments, public works, maintenance, parks and recreation, engineering, fire and police even at times. So, it takes a collaborative effort from all departments to be able to continue to win these awards. First, I'd like to recognize the water plant. Ms. Connie Nelms is superintendent. They were awarded the platinum award for five consecutive years of perfect operations. And as Mr. Grizzard stated, this is perfect operations, no mistakes. And it's again, a direct reflection of the diligence of the staff at the water plant under her direction. I'd also like to recognize Danny Dyer from our wastewater facility. They were awarded the platinum award for 12 years, consistent, perfect operations. And again, it's a diligent staff under his leadership that allows us to continue winning these awards and it sets a standard for us in the future. So, we have to obtain it every year now.
City property sale, 108 acres on Esco Way. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may recall that quite a while back, the city agreed to transfer 108 acres which it owned on Esco Way to the development authority. But in the closing documents for that property transfer, the city reserved the right to approve a future sale. And the development authority has approached us with a sale. And it is actually to the owner of Jordan Truck Sales. And then, the amount of the sale is $351,942.50. Again, the city does not own that property, but the city reserved the right to approve that sale. This has been discussed in executive session. And if you have questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
I move that the city approve the sale of the 108 acres on Esco Way.
I'll second that.
Oh, you said?
Any discussion? Wait a minute, I don't know if I can second that or not, Chuck. I voted on that in the payroll authority.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of transfer to the payroll authority? Please raise your hand.
Excuse me. It's already been transferred. This is the approval of the sale to Ronnie Jordan or whatever entity he's going to purchase it in.
Item number five, police vehicle lease.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was added because, and I apologize for adding it at the last minute. It turns out to purchase these vehicles under this lease, if we don't place the order in April, they will not receive them until next year. Is that right, Joel? So, we discussed this at length in a work session and this will be paid out of the next year's budget. But we ask that you approve the purchase now for 21 police vehicles. The state contract is with Aiken Dodge and the total, this is a six-year lease purchase in the amount of $167,919.88 per year. We have looked at other financing methods and this is the best method for the city to do this. Again, I think there was a long discussion about the benefits of this, retaining employees and actually hopefully making the vehicles last longer since they'd be assigned to one person and not hot-seated from one driver to the next. So, again, my apologies for adding this at the last minute, but it had to do with when the vendor could supply. So, we ask that you approve this purchase.
I move for the approval of the ordering of 21 police vehicles under the six-year lease purchase agreement.
Motion second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving this police vehicle lease program? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Miss Stutter, just gets back down to you. Board appointment, main street. Board appointment, Main Street.
Yes, we currently have one vacancy on the Main Street. Board of Directors due to the resignation of Mark Sullivan. His term was effective through November of 2019. The Main Street Director and Board of Directors have recommended appointing Ash Edwards to fill this vacancy. I'm not sure if you know Ash, but he's a Carrollton High School graduate. He graduated from the University of West Georgia. He lived overseas for several years, and then he recently moved back to Carrollton, and he runs and operates his family's business, which is Lambert Tire Company. Since his return, he's been very involved in the Main Street programs and attending the meetings, and really would probably be an asset to downtown Carrollton by serving in this role on the board. If he's appointed, he would be eligible for reappointment in November of 2019 for a full three-year term at that point.
This is the same guy that's been doing, rebranded Lambert Tire, and like does the classes and stuff for people that don't have...
He's actually, he's an amazing person.
It seems super cool, yeah.
Any discussion on this, or we want to just...
I move for the appointment of Ash Edwards to serve on the Main Street Board.
Motion second. Hearing no discussion more. All in favor of Ash Edwards being appointed to the Main Street Board? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. A board appointment, Board of Development Appeals, got two?
Yes, we've got two folks whose terms expired on April 1st, 2019, Quintine Valer and John Avery. Both of their terms actually did expire on April 1st. At this time, staff recommends that they be reappointed. They would be reappointed to a full three-year term again. Both Ms. Valer and Mr. Avery have been assets to this board and have been very beneficial, and they have great attendance records.
I move that we appoint Mrs. Valer and Mr. Avery to the Board of Development Appeals.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Real quick, I served with Ms. Valer on the board when I was on the Board of Development Appeal. She does a great job, and she's always been an asset, and she does have a good attendance. I don't think she ever missed a meeting when I was there. I think I served on the board for like four years.
She stops in my office a lot, too.
Great woman.
Good woman. Both people are very good people.
I like John Avery, great guy.
Both are good, great people. Motion second. We got a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any more business come before this council? Seeing none. Motion adjourned.